Did you? Okay. Sorry.
Yeah.
I think major.
You've got a couple of minutes.
Did you? You bought everybody's?
Oh, they put so many here for the.
Yes.
But you'll give us.
Yes, I'll scan it and email it to you in this file. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. Right, right, right. Yeah.
You have to take that one with my wife.
He's coming for pictures. This is Michelle's work. All right, this is your work here. Well, I printed it. I didn't do anything. I didn't even crop it. I just printed it. There's one for you. You're welcome. Oh, are they in there doing it now? I missed it. I'm bad, Pappy.
There you go. Go for it. I was hoping you could look into.
Thank you. Yes, thank Michelle. She took it. And here, there's one extra. So you guys can fight over it if you want. If you want me on your desk, right there. How about option there where you're working? Does your wife push you better? Getting better than.
It's gonna be a while. She ended up getting a virus.
Does she have steroids?
Um, I don't know. She's on more things.
I bet she did. And I feel like.
How you feel?
Yeah, it's sometimes.
I'm trying to be a rock with the president.
She's thirty-five.
Now, I've been married for twenty, almost twenty-four years. Almost twenty-four years. I know how to approach the age thing.
Oh, that's lovely.
Wow. I had, I had, oh, wow. I had to have all four of my listeners feed.
That worked out just fine.
So the meeting hasn't started? Does that mean we can be real? I don't.
That's the recording right now.
We're talking over my head. The only reason I know is because of my needs and high street. This is the only piece of free. I don't do it during meetings, so. Doesn't look bad.
They're above my pay grade.
Yes, I do make. A hundred more a year.
They were really good.
Don't be jealous.
All right, folks, just to mention ahead of time, please make sure, I'm saying this to myself as well, to silence your cell phones.
Thank you, Wes.
Is there a six to nine?
Did you do this?
Oh, I printed that. That is Michelle's picture.
Nice. Thanks, Michelle.
Yeah, thanks, Michelle.
Really nice.
Sit on the chair. I'm gonna make it a Christmas card.
I'm gonna make it a Christmas card for it. You gonna put it on mugs for this?
Maybe.
All right. Well, welcome, everyone, to the Xenia City Council regular meeting of December fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three. And we're gonna start off tonight with invocation by Pastor Todd Martin from Liberty Life Church. Todd, will you please come up? Can I ask the rest of you to stand if you could at this time?
I do have a scripture tonight.
Great.
Um, the word says, "The name of the Lord is a strong tower, and the righteous run into it and they are safe." And it's kind of been on my mind all day to pray for safety. And just pray for our city and our county for, for safety. So let's pray.
Sure.
Father, we come to you tonight, and, Lord, we thank you for your grace and your mercy. And, Lord, we just pray, Lord, over our city tonight. Lord, we pray for each one that resides here, and, Lord, we pray for every council member and their families. Lord, we pray, God, that you would just protect. In fact, Lord, we just pray that you would put your arms of love and compassion around each one during this season. And we thank you, Lord, that we have the opportunity to come into this building and make you number one. And we thank you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Let's go ahead and Councilman Scrivens will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. All right, we'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. First item is roll call.
Vice President Smith?
Here.
Councilman Scrivens?
Here.
Councilwoman Dean?
Here.
Councilwoman Brand?
Here.
Councilwoman Dean?
Mayor Mays?
Here.
President Urschel?
Here. I had a note from Councilwoman Dean that he had a work emergency earlier today, and he asked to be excused. So I'll have to get a motion on that.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Great, let's go ahead and call a vote.
What's that? Vice President Smith?
Yes, that's right. Vice President.
Vice President Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Scrivens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brand?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. All right, next item is cruel minutes from our November twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three meeting. Do I have a motion on that?
So moved.
Do you have any com-? Uh, I'm sorry, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second, I had, uh, the, uh, motion was by Councilwoman Dean, and the second is by the Vice President. All right, any comments before we vote? All right, let's call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brand?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. All right, next item is cruel minutes from our November twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three meeting. Do I have a motion on that?
So moved.
Do you have any com-? Uh, I'm sorry, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second, I had, uh, the, uh, motion was by Councilwoman Dean, and the second is by the Vice President. All right, any comments before we vote? All right, let's call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brand?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. All right, next item is cruel minutes from our November twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three meeting. Do I have a motion on that?
So moved.
Do you have any com-? Uh, I'm sorry, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second, I had, uh, the, uh, motion was by Councilwoman Dean, and the second is by the Vice President. All right, any comments before we vote? All right, let's call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brand?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have no, uh, special presentations right now. Next, uh, item is, uh, audience comments. If you'd like to address the council, please come up to the podium and state your name and address, and feel free to address us.
Good evening, folks. Mike Cammer, um, thirty-one ten Fallow Road, Springfield, Ohio. And I'm here to talk about the, uh, bike crossing on a bike path at the McDonald's on the north side of town. I had the unfortunate incident of being involved in a collision there. Um, you know, I'm not at, I'm, didn't make it to the pancake stage luckily, but, um.
And, and Mike, you were on a bicycle.
I was on a trike.
A trike.
One of those slow, funny-wheeled things.
Right.
You know, that, uh, you'll appreciate riding those the older you get, because they're easier on the bones. The problem is there, at McDonald's, there's two lanes going in, one lane going out. And the bike path, or multi-use pass, is a correct and, you know, road term. The people at the McDonald's, they, they come out of the drive-thru, and they're driving parallel with the bike path. They have to turn, they turn to cross to go out to sixty-eight. And state law requires them to stop before they cross the multi-use trail bike path.
Right.
Nobody does. And if you're riding down, and, you know, not everybody goes, comes to a complete stop. I mean, there's people that, you know, that, you know, there are some people that come to a complete stop, and some that, you know, just make sure it's clear. But you can't see the people that are coming out of McDonald's and turning, and they can't see you. And, um, I had an unfortunate incident of, uh, tangling with a truck that was bigger than me. We settled our losses between us. But what I'd like to see is, um, either a sign at the edge where you turn to come out of the McDonald's to make sure cars stop there. Right now, by a power-revised code, they are required to stop before they go across the bike path. You know, uh, that's a rhetorical question, but how many of you guys realize that if you pull out of an alley or across the, uh, out of a driveway and there's a crosswalk, that you're required to stop?
Right.
You know, it's, you know, so the other things that could be done that were in, in, you know, um, orders of magnitude to try to get people to make it safer intersection would be put bollards in the center of the road. So if you're coming north on sixty-eight, you can turn into the McDonald's, okay? And if you're trying to come out of McDonald's, you can only turn to the north. And that way, you're not having to watch traffic coming from the s-. You, you, you've got traffic coming from the south that you have to watch, but you don't have to watch anybody coming from the north. They won't be able to get in because they could use Kenzie, the exit, the entrance at Kenz- for Kenzie Avenue. And the, you know, the last thing that I, and it would probably be the safest solution, would be to close that a-, close that entrance, because McDonald's can continue to do business with an exit, an entrance and an exit off of Kenzie Avenue. And it would take a lot of the cross-traffic out of that. It would take all the tr- cross-traffic out, because Casey's has an entrance farther up. And it, it would make it safer for everybody can, that would, um, that rides. And I talked to a friend that rides, he's got a couple, probably three thousand miles so far this year. He will not, and there are people that will not ride from the station through Xenia up to there because of, you know, crossing into McDonald's. And there are people that are starting to now ride through town, and that's, you know, a bicyclist's right to ride through town. But if, if I rode through town, we'd have traffic backed up to Wilmington as slow as I am. So, you know, it was, it's, you know, and I, I've reached out to McDonald's, and, uh, they have not come back to me. The franchisee is, um, Hamilton Family McDonald's out of, uh, Richmond. I've reached out to McDonald's Corporation. I've talked to your traffic engineer, and his story is they can't put a stop sign on private property. And I've talked to Chuck Fraser over at the, um, Green County Parks. You know, a sign, a stop sign and a sign, like, if you guys have ever driven where there's a railroad track right along the side, and, you know, they put up a sign where you're gonna go to turn, and it reminds you that the railroad train, the track is coming across, and you should stop. Maybe that would be a solution, is to put a, a sign up so the people that are coming out of McDonald's know that, hey, there's a bike path there, folks. You should stop, you know, and the fact that it's a law, you know, it's a misdemeanor. It's like a fifth misdemeanor until you do it so many times that the cops know you on first-name basis. So that's all I can ask for, and I appreciate your, your interest in trying to take care of it and, um, make Xenia a safer place for, place for, uh, the bicycles, because you're the hub of it all.
Great, thank you so much. Do I have anyone else that would like to address the council this time? Michelle, do we have any electronic comments?
No.
Okay, great. All right. All right, we're gonna move on to old business. The first one is ordinance twenty-two-three dash thirty-five. This is amending Title II, Streets and Sidewalk Areas of the City Streets, Utilities and Public Service Code, and amending section six-sixty point oh-five of the General Offense Code. This was introduced by Councilman Scrivens on eleven-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Uh, move for a passage.
Great, thank you so much. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay. Madam Law Director, you have any comments before we go into our public hearing?
Not much you have anything for me. This is, um, the second part. We, as you know, we did a complete rewrite of Part Ten, which is our Public Utilities and Street Code. Title Six, you approved at the last meeting. This is Title Two. And then Title Four, we will be presented for introduction. And I apologize for the size of your sound pack this evening.
Great, it's fine. All right, before we vote, we're gonna have a public hearing at this time, so I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If anyone in the public would like to have any comments, either for or against this ordinance, please come to the podium and, uh, address the council. Seeing that we have no one, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from council before we vote? Okay, let's call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brand?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Next item is ordinance twenty-two-three dash thirty-six, amending section two-fifty-one point oh-five, title Public Improvement Funds of the City's Administrative Code. And this was introduced by Councilwoman Dean on eleven-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three.
I'd like to move the passage.
Do I have a second to that?
I'll second.
Seconded by the mayor? Thank you. Any comments here from our, uh, finance director before we have our, our public comments?
No, sir, I have nothing.
Great. Uh, we're gonna have a public hearing on this before we vote, so I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have anyone in the public that would like to come and make any comments on this, either for or against, before we vote? Okay, seems we have no one. We're closing the public hearing. Any questions or comments from the council before we vote? Let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brand?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is ordinance twenty-two-three dash thirty-seven, establishing a one-year moratorium on the commencement or establishment of adult-use cannabis operators, including cultivators, processors, and dispensaries within the city of Xenia, Ohio. This was introduced by Mayor, Mayor Mays on eleven-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to go ahead and move the passage.
Moved for passage by the mayor. Do I have a second to that?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dean?
Yep.
Uh, before we have a public hearing, uh, Mr. Law Director, any comments before we have? Uh, not, not Law, Mr. Law. Mr. City Manager, any comments before we, uh, have a discussion there?
Uh, just a reminder, this will provide sufficient time for the state to make determinations on regulations for these things, as well as, uh, for us then to evaluate that and provide, um, some policy analysis and recommendation back to council.
Correct.
And also a reminder, we do already have a moratorium in place. Now, you did that as an emergency.
Correct.
Under our charter, emergency ordinance is stand automatically repealed as of the sixty-first day.
Correct.
So this just continues it. Um, the Senate has passed some legislation. The House hasn't.
Right.
And they did not concur in what the Senate passed, so really, we just wanna wait and see what the state comes out with, uh, the General Assembly as far as regulations, before we make any decisions on these, which most communities across Ohio are doing.
Great. Thank you so much. All right, we're gonna have a public hearing at this time. Do you have any, uh, comments, either for or against this ordinance? Please come to the podium and state your position. Okay, we have no comments at this time, so go ahead and close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from council before we vote? All right, let's call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Scrivens, excuse me. Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brand?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, next item is, uh, new business. This will be an introduction of ordinance twenty-two-three dash thirty-eight, amending Title Four, Utilities of the City's Streets and Utilities and Public Service Code, and amending section two-fifty point oh-four of the Administrative Code, and amending the city's fee schedule. Before we, uh, have a mo- a motion for introduction and comments from our, our staff on this before we move forward?
Well, just, uh, open by saying that, um, uh, this is, uh, the last major section of our Utilities Code. We write, as council is aware, and, uh, staff has, uh, put in, uh, an, an inordinate amount of time like this. I think we've done four reviews of this legislation, and we have, of course, taken this back through our, uh, Public Services Utilities Committee, which has endorsed this. Uh, that's the Law Director to maybe cover some of the particulars, uh, within the legislation.
As Brent said, this is the last section. This is Title Four. This is all our utilities, so this was, as you can tell from the side, it's a big section. Um, again, we had the issue that we saw with some of the other two titles, that many of the existing sections, uh, were very outdated, uh, back to the sixties, a lot of them from nineteen-seventy-eight, had not been updated. And your water and sewer, you had a lot of provisions that dealt more with, um, the construction, dictating what type of pipe had to be used, dictating what type of lines, and of course, that's all changed. Um, that's not really something you want in your code, that's something you want in your rules and regs as far as construction. So really tried to go through and condense, update, um, put what we needed in here. We'll start with ten-ten, the Water Utility. This is currently chapter ten-forty-two. Um, you have forty sections in this chapter. Um, over the years, there were some new sections enacted, but old sections weren't repealed, so you had a lot of sections that conflicted with each other. So the proposed amendments really consolidate and update, um, a lot of those existing provisions. We took the technical requirements out. Those should be in your rules and regs. We made provision for water utility rules and regulations. The city engineer and public service director will work together to write those. We currently require that if you are within a certain amount of feet, um, of a sewer main, that you have to connect and, and be on a city sewer. We do not have a similar requirement for water.
Right.
Was not, not in there. Sure, we added that. Um, every city does that. If you're within three hundred feet of a water main, you have to be connected to the city's water supply. We addressed the installation of water mains and the extension of mains. Um, one of the issues that we've run into over the years, as we're dealing with particularly old lines, old extensions, is that easements weren't granted. Sure, we added a requirement, if you're going to install a main, if you're going to extend a main, it's your duty to get the city the easements it needs. Um, so hopefully, that will take care of that moving forward. Um, we added a provision for waiver of tap-in fees as an economic development tool. Uh, it's a certain threshold, the city manager can approve. Anything over that is gonna, gotta come to council for your approval. The current regulations, we had nothing in there that even allowed council to waive fees, so we thought that was important to add. Um, we updated requirements regarding water meters, you know, back when, when this was written. Um, really, up until probably about five, six years ago, there were manual read meters. Well, we have remote meters now, so trying to recognize that that's now how we do it. We now do monthly readings. We don't do quarterly readings. Um, one of the changes we're also suggesting, and this would not begin until, uh, twenty-twenty-six, is an annual COLA increase, and COLA stands for a cost of living increase. What this would allow, what, what a lot of cities face is, if you are seeing a deficiency in your water fund, you are seeing a deficiency in your sewer fund, um, a lot of times, you'll see there's an increase of three dollars a month, four dollars a month, five dollars a month. We need money, because most cities will wait until you really need it. Um, so that, that's, it's usually a big hit on the customers with those increases. COLA is gonna be a very small increase every year. It will allow that fund to keep pace with inflation, because those funds are used for upgrades and improvements to the system. We also built into that, um, the ability for council to waive all or any part of that increase for one or multiple years. So if the finance director would come to you, and he recommends, you know, we've got a good, healthy water fund, we don't need a COLA increase for the next three years, council can waive that. But it would stop that, gosh, we're really low on water, we need to increase rates five dollars a month. Um, that's what really hurts people, that kind of big increase. COLA increases are usually very small, much like our sanitation, or, you know, under our contact with Runkie, your collection fees go up a little bit every year. This would kind of mirror that. Um, that wouldn't start until twenty-twenty-six. Then, we've also established regulations. The city has had for quite a number of years a bulk water program, where you, as water hauler, can come in and buy city water. You didn't have anything formally established for that program. Um, part of the issue was, you know, you may get a hauler in, a lot of these haulers don't have utility accounts, because they don't have businesses in the city. Um, so this is gonna require an annual fee. It's going to require a deposit to make sure if a bill isn't paid, we have a deposit that we can get that money back. So we just, uh, and that recommendation came from the finance director, I think it was a very good one, um, just to kind of try and reveal that any little bit. Um, much as extraterritorial customers pay current rates plus fifty percent.
Right.
Bulk water haulers are gonna do the same.
Right.
Now, the next chapter, ten-fifteen, this was actually a combination of two of your existing chapters. You have a, uh, chapter ten-forty-four, which is sewers generally, and then you have a chapter ten-forty-six, which is sewer user charges. Um, I don't know why that was ever put in two chapters, but what we did was condensed that down into one. Again, a lot of it was pulling the technical requirements out. Those are more properly in your rules and regs and your construction specs. Um, so we did pull those out. We, as I said, we kept the requirement, um, for connection to the city sanitary sewer, and we kept it what it currently is. You have to be within, that sewer main has to be within one hundred feet of the property line, three hundred feet of the building, and it's able to be served by gravity flow. So if you meet those three existing conditions, you have to be hooked into the city sewer. As we did with water, we addressed the installation of mains and the extension of mains. We added a provision for the waiver of sewer tapping fees, uh, as an economic development tool. The COLA that I just described, we're recommending that for sewer as well, again, with the same provision to allow council to waive if it's not needed. Um, we are, we didn't do this for water, but we are recommending for sewer, um, that there be a requirement that you put in a backflow prevention device. Um, this is where people really get damaged if sewer backs up. A backflow prevention device will prevent that. It also saves you on your homeowner's insurance. Um, a lot of homeowner's insurance, you can even get a backflow prevention device through your insurance, and they'll give you a voucher. Um, sure, we are recommending that, uh, to make that an actual requirement. All properties must have a black, backflow prevention device. This will prevent, hopefully, not sanitary sewer flooding, and it will prevent claims being filed against the city. Chapter ten-sixteen is discharged into the wastewater treatment plant. This is currently chapter ten-forty-eight. Uh, the changes to this were basically renumbering. They were minimal. The only significant amendment, your extra-strength sewer charges are currently in your sewer user charges chapter. They're more properly in this discharge into the wastewater treatment plant, because what that chapter really covers is your extra strength or really large quantity. Um, we did, I don't know why this was ever put in. Um, extra-strength sewer charges are meant to cover the extra cost to the city of treating certain types of waste. For some reason, we had in there that the maximum, um, anyone could be charged with five hundred dollars. But the minimum, the maximum.
Right.
I don't know why. I don't know why we would do that. Um, because if you do that, you're basically asking all the other people that pay sewer user fees to underwrite your use. Um, so we are recommending that be taken out. Chapter ten-twenty, Stormwater Management Utility. This is currently chapter ten-forty-nine. Uh, this was first enacted in two thousand and four. Um, again, you had a lot of unnecessary technical requirements in this chapter. We are pulling those out. Those would be in your Stormwater Management Utility Rules and regs. Um, the biggest change here, what, what most cities do for commercial and industrial use, is they establish something called an ERU, Equivalent Residential Unit. And basically- And basically, the way you figure it is, you take the, the square footage, you know, say we had an Amazon warehouse. You take the square footage of that property, you divide it by what's the square footage of the ERU. That gives you a number of ERUs, and you times that then by whatever the monthly fee for an ERU is. That assures that people are actually paying stormwater fees based on their actual use. It's not fair that, what do you call him, Philly Bagel?
Yes.
That, that lives in a house on Second Street is paying the same stormwater fee that a large shopping center with a ton of paving is paying. That's not fair to our residents. So we are recommending to establish an ERU, like most cities do. That would be new. We're also recommending a COLA increase, and again, giving council the right to waive that if it's not needed. One of the other big changes that we are recommending as well is the institution of a monthly sewer charge on utility bills for curb and gutter. Under state law, a property owner is responsible for curb and gutter. There are two ways you do that. You either, when you do a road project, you fix the curb and gutter and you assess the property owners. That can hit people with a really big amount in a very short space of time. There are extra costs that the auditor is going to add on to that for collection. So what we're recommending instead is a monthly sewer charge that every utility in the count, every utility billing account in the city would pay. All that money is going to go into one fund. Every time the city does paving, that is the money that's going to be used to fix the curbs and gutters. We should not have to assess property owners if we have that sewer charge. We're able to fix their curb and gutters without them having an assessment. What that also means is your paving dollars are going to go farther. Instead of your paving dollars being spent on concrete work, your paving dollars are actually going to be spent on paving. So that is one of the other new changes. Next chapter is ten twenty-one, Illicit Discharge and Illegal Connection Control. This is about connections and discharges into stormwater sewer system. These are required by the EPA. I think that was about two thousand and fifteen or sixteen, the EPA first came out, that cities were required to have these kind of regs. We did not make any changes. Really, all we did was renumber. So no, no other amendments to that chapter. Chapter ten twenty-five, currently, this is ten sixty or sanitation chapter. We are re-titling this. It's your solid waste collection and sanitation. We're also moving it. This is currently in Title Six, Other Public Services. Solid Waste Collection is a utility.
Right.
Whether the city is directly providing it or we're contracting, it's a utility. So we are recommending it be moved to Title Four. The amendments include, one of the things I think it's hard to see the way we are currently billing, if, if you look at our fee schedule for residential, there's one number. And that is the contracted amount that we contract with Rumpke, plus a sanitation fee. If you don't have a solid waste collection, we're not charging you for that. Your commercial, your residential, you're still paying that sanitation fee. You're not paying the collection fee, but you're paying the sanitation fee. We're recommending splitting those two out. It'll be easier then to update. I mean, the solid collection rates are whatever the bided amount is. The sanitation fee itself, that we use that for things such as street sweeping, cleaning up the curbs and gutters. If we have to demolish a structure because it provo, presents a public health issue, that one is used for that. So that will be a sewer charge. It already is. We just want to split the two. We're also recommending a COLA increase on sanitation. And again, council would have the right to waive that. We are adding a new section on excessive waste. When I say excessive waste, I'm, I'm thinking, what we were thinking is move-outs. You have a tenant or you have somebody that moves out and they just pile a huge amount. The city shouldn't have to bear the cost of that. The users of our, of our solid waste collection utility shouldn't have to bear the cost of that. So we're putting a system in place. If that happens, we're going to notify the property owner. They have ten days to get it cleaned up. If they don't, we're going to have it cleaned up, but they're going to pay for it. So that was that, what that was meant to address. We're keeping the special collection that the city currently does on the bulk pickup. That hasn't changed. We are also adding prohibitions regarding trash picking. This would be, you set out an old dining room chair. It's sitting out, it's in the open. Somebody can come along and take that. What they can't do is open the lids on your trash container and dig through them. That will now be prohibited. It currently isn't under our code. So that would be new. Next is Chapter ten thirty, Utility Billing. This is currently ten forty. One of the big changes that we are recommending here is, we currently allow utility accounts in tenants' names. There's legislation pending in the state. I expect to, I actually expect to see this pass in their lame deposition, because they've been kicking this around for a while. The state is considering legislation that if, what we currently do now, if you have a utility account in a tenant's name, if that bill isn't paid, we assess that on the property. If the tenant doesn't pay it and the landlord, the property owner doesn't pay it, it gets assessed. The bill that's pending at the state, we will no longer be able to do that. We are going to have no way to collect that unpaid bill. So basically, what that means is, you would be asking of homeowners that are paying their utility bills to underwrite a landlord's business of renting. No, no. So beginning March one, all utility accounts have to actually be and will be converted to the property owner's name. No more tenant accounts. We really, if a tenant moves out of town, we have no way of collecting that money. I, I have no way of getting that money back. So that's probably one of the biggest changes. We're also removing the requirement, we currently have a fifty-dollar account initiation fee. If you open a new account, we're getting rid of that. We're removing the online payment fee, which is currently two dollars.
Well, the...
It's already built in.
Yeah, it's built into the, it's built into the fee.
Yeah, so having that extra one on our fee schedule, we're, we're taking that out. We're going to add a requirement. If there's an account that's been disconnected for non-payment three or more times in a rolling twelve-month period, they're going to have to pay for the installation of an automatic disconnection service valve. We've also put in there that the finance director in those cases would be allowed to require a deposit. If you've got somebody that's continually late, that we've had to disconnect you because you're not paying, the finance director in those cases would be allowed to require a deposit. And that deposit will go to cover any unpaid utility bill. We are adding sections addressing the use of a temporary hose bid meter. Hose bid meter is you want to fill your pool. Your sewer user charges are based on the amount of water you consume. Because it's assumed that water comes in, it's going out the sanitary sewer system. A hose bid meter allows us to bill you just for the water that you use to fill the pool, and then you get an adjustment on your sewer account. Hey, we know this went into the pool, it didn't go into sanitary sewer. So we addressed rental of those, deposits for those, and how adjustments are made for those. One of the other things we do from time to time is hydrant meters. Example I can give you, when they built the Career Center, that, that contractor wanting to use a hydrant meter allows them to use water before they've actually installed the lines. One of the changes that we're going to make with that is, the contractor is going to have to provide the meter. We're no longer going to allow the contractors to install and take those off themselves. Our public service guys are going to do that. We just feel that's safer, assuring that there's no damage then to the actual hydrant. We're also going to establish with this rewrite, a Utility Billing Appeals Committee. If there's a customer that's got a dispute on their utility bill, the process will be, they will, excuse me, first request an adjustment from the accounts receivable manager. If she denies that, they can submit a formal written dispute with the finance director. If he denies that, then they will have a right to appeal to a committee. That committee will consist of the public service director, the city manager, and then whoever the chair of council's Public Service and Utility Committee is at the time. So we just wanted to build in a process. If, if a customer had a billing dispute, there's now a process for them to follow to be able to, to appeal that.
Danette, is there protection for a customer during that appeals time that their water would not be turned off?
I don't believe there is. Typically, typically what happens, typically that appeal is happening because there's a, a potential leak or something like that. It's not all that common that they're actually shut off. A lot of times, they'll pay the bill and, and then make a dispute. I don't know that there's a protection in the code right now that says they wouldn't be turned off during that.
We could put that in the Utility Billing Rules and Regulations, that any disconnection is stayed while the appeal is pending.
Right. Because I'm assuming there's, there's no time limit on the execution of the appeal, right?
No, there is. Yeah, there's, there's timeframes built into the code. And so, and typically, we respond to those appeals internally very quickly. I mean, it's within a couple of days, they're going to get a response of whether their, whether their dispute is, is approved or denied. And then they would have a period of time to appeal that to the Utility Billing Appeals Committee. But there are specific timelines on how long they have to dispute that.
And that section also requires the finance director in the Utility Billing Rules and regs to set forth a specific process on how that's going to flow within the time periods that we put in the code. So we could certainly put in Utility Billing Rules and regs that any disconnection would be stayed while in appeal.
We, we could. It would be, it would be somewhat unlikely, because of the timeframe they have, they're already past due a certain amount of time and they get a shot. It would be somewhat unlikely that it wouldn't be all the way through that process by the time that, that they'd be shut off. Because it's not like you're, you're late and then you're going to get shut off. There's a period of time and in there, usually at least forty-five days that you're past due before that would occur. So there should be enough time to adjudicate it in there. But we, we can certainly build something into the rules and regs that says if there's an active appeal, we won't disconnect.
Last chapter is ten thirty-one. We currently address extraterritorial customer. And by extraterritorial, I mean, customer that lives outside the city's corporate limits. And we do have a number of these accounts. We currently discuss that in your sewer regs. We don't discuss it in water. So the thing that really made sense to us was to pull that out and create it as its own chapter. There is case law that we have no duty to provide utility services to anyone that lies outside the city's corporate limits. We are allowed to require a service agreement. As you know, we've been doing that at least since I've been here. So we really kind of address that. If you are going, if, if you are outside the city's limits, you want to hook into any of our utilities, you are going to be required to sign a service agreement. No services without that agreement. You're also going to be required, and we currently do this as well, you're going to pay current usage rates plus fifty percent until such time as you are annexed or become a part of the city. We are recommending complete repeal of existing Chapters ten thirty-eight, which is Definitions, ten fifty, which is Water and Sewer Extension Policy, ten fifty-two, which is Water and Sewer Extension Cost Recovery Fee Procedures, and ten fifty-six, Electricity. That chapter actually has no sections. And Chapter ten fifty-eight, Gas. That chapter also has no section. One of the other things that is a part of this is the fee schedule. You'll note that that's attached. We basically, one, one of the things that we're recommending, and you've heard me mention this before, our fee schedule is currently in the City Government Code. It's its own title, its own chapter, and one section. What we're recommending is that gets pulled out. It gets made an appendix to the City Government Code. There are a number of places in here, in this rewrite, where you will be authorizing city staff to make updates. Give you an example, our solid waste collection fees. Council is going to decide what those fees are when you decide who to award the bid to.
Right.
So having you have to go back and amend the fee schedule for something you already voted on, it's kind of a waste of council's time. So what was said was, the finance director is to go in and update that fee schedule with whatever those new contracted amounts are. Another example, Right-Away Administration. There is an annual registration maintenance fee that anyone that uses our Right-Away has to pay. That gets determined every year. You have, in your Right-Away Administration chapter, a set formula of how that has to be determined, but it's going to be a different number. You've authorized the city engineer using that formula to plug in what that number is going to be yearly. So it's just going to make it a little easier, I think. It's going to make sure that the most up-to-date numbers are in there for the public. It's not that we have to come back to council and, gosh, this changed a couple of months ago, but you guys were doing all this. We can go in and update those types of things. It's just going to be more updated, more current. I, I think it's going to be easier for us to manage. So you will know that the fee schedule, that the entire fee schedule is being presented. And the reason for that just is because we're pulling it out of that Title Two. I will probably see some more amendments to that fee schedule. Our, our project for next year is Part Eight, Your Business regs. We, we do want to tackle, I didn't think you had enough to read. So we're going to tackle that in the first quarter of next year. The only other change that we're recommending is also an amendment to two fifty. This is the section that you adopted. It's in the Finance section. Two fifty is the Finance Department chapter. Two fifty oh four, when we redid the administrative code, two fifty oh four breaks down, based on state law, how the finance director can do assessments. Because under the revised code, there's different procedure for water, for sewer, for stormwater, for sanitation, for abatement costs. We were having an issue in that the county auditor was requiring a resolution from you every time the finance director needed to do one of those assessments. It's really, that's crazy. So you did two fifty oh four, which authorizes the finance director to do those assessments in accordance with the requirements. Because we tweaked the language on some of those utilities as to what we were calling them. We're not calling them water rents, we're calling them user fees. That's really what those tweaks to those chapter are. Just to make sure the utility and that assessment process, that the language that we're using for both matches up. So those were really the only changes to that. I know I talked for a long time, but that really was a bird's eye view of a lot of this. We did review this twice with Public Service and Utility. Really tried to take, you know, we went to them first. Here's what we're thinking. What do you think of this? They gave us some guidance, and then we took that back and really had them go through it. Ryan, I don't know if there's anything you wanted to add?
No, I think the law director covered it well. I mean, there's a, this is a, a huge section of code. Or several sections of code, and so there's lots of cover there. There's some pretty significant changes here, but I think they are going to be, they are going to be more efficient and, and help to, to solve some of the issues. going to be more efficient and, and help to, to solve some of the issues that we've had over the last several years. And a lot of this code is well overdue for, for review and update. I think these are, are some much, much needed changes that'll be beneficial. So, thank the law director. This was a major undertaking and, and we've, we've had a lot of conversation on, on these things, and I think it's a good, fun product, so.
And just a reminder, what, what we give off all three of these sections, if council approves this, none of this goes into effect until March 1st.
Right.
That will give us time really for some PR, so we can get word out to the public. Here's what's changing, here's what it means. We think that's important. It gives utility billing a chance to get everything in place. We, we didn't want this to go into effect in 60 days. That wasn't enough time to really get the word out. So, March 1st would be the effective date for all three of these sections.
All right. Does someone like to introduce this ordinance?
It's my last hurrah. I'd like to introduce it.
Sure. Introduced by councilman Scrivens?
March, please. Could I?
Yes, any other comments or questions here before we move on?
Probably could, Mr. President. Sitting on the Public Services and Utilities Committee, we've gone through a lot of antiquated ordinances and resolutions, and we're going to present this eventually for passage, and it'll definitely streamline a whole lot of things. And we have five or six new things with, in the ordinance, so I'll definitely be supporting it. Well, you'll be supporting it when it comes up for vote again. It might come up before then in a month, right?
Yeah, we'll vote, sure.
Intro.
Let's make one other comment on the utility billing going to the, the property owner. I think there's, there's one other issue this will address, and that's where landlords are not repairing water leaks, and their tenants don't have the right to do that, and the landlord may allow that leak to go on literally for months. We've seen situations like that. And so, the renter then has a bill for thousands of dollars, which a lot of folks that are fixed income cannot afford to pay, and the water will be shut off at that time. And if they, then at that point move on, then we have no way of recovering that. But because of the behavior of the landlord, the, the tenant has also lost their, their ability to have a place to live at that time, too. So, you know, my sense is that this will help with the property owner to make repairs of his items if he has a leak like that, because he's going to be the one responsible for directly paying that. And, you know, with our digital billing, there's plenty of opportunity for property owners to have automatic, you know, enunciation sent to them, right, and information sent to them if, if a water leak would occur, to help them, you know, identify this quickly, so.
Also, Mr. President, in 1015, the sewer, sanitary sewer, with the time not being effective until March, that gives the current, existing homeowners time to install backflow preventers. That's a good PR job that we have to tell everybody, because that's been a problem recently. Thank you, sir.
I think a lot of the, the, you know, claims the city's had, because somebody's had a, a backup in their basement, they didn't know that such a device was even available.
Right.
And I think a lot of people don't realize, if you install that, you're going to save on your homeowner's insurance. You, you get a pretty big credit for that. So, yeah, we definitely want to be able to do some, some public relations on that. The hard part for me is over now, it's going to be Christina's hard part.
That's right. All right. Any other questions before we move on? Okay. Next item is ordinance 2023-39. This is an introduction. This is amending chapter 886 to be titled Community Reinvestment Area Program and Enacting Sections 886.031, 886.09, and 886.99 of the ZENI City Code. Before we introduce this, Mr. City Manager, some comments here, please.
Thank you, sir. Staff's recommending introduction of an ordinance this evening that would authorize amendments to the city's policy on our local community reinvestment area program, or CRA program. CRAs constitute economic development incentive options in which all or a portion of the increased value of property taxes can be abated for a period of time for new construction or improvements to existing property. The city currently has two CRA program areas. In August of 1985, the city established CRA area number one, which included a small portion of the southern edge of downtown from Second and Detroit Streets to South Galloway, down to what is now the bike trail, and over to Wyman Street. Reinvestment in this area is currently eligible for a 10-year, 100% property tax abatement on the increase in value for remodeling projects or the value improvement via new construction. To assist with the redevelopment of the former ZENI Town Square and potential redevelopment of areas adjacent to that property, staff's recommending that council look to expand the boundaries of CRA number one, which would also encompass the area that is currently designated as CRA area number two. Thus, instead of two CRAs, you'd have one larger expanded CRA with different requirements as detailed in the agenda report. As part of the proposed amendments, we're also recommending amendment of the tax abatement period for eligible projects for up to 15 years for new residential construction, up to 12 years for the remodeling of multifamily dwellings of three or more units where the cost is at least $5,000, and up to 10 years for the remodeling of one and two family residential units where the cost is at least $2,500. For commercial industrial properties, up to 15 years on new construction, and up to 12 years for the remodeling of commercial or industrial structures where the cost is at least $5,000, and that would be also subject to a council approval. Staff is further recommending changes that would appoint the Director of Development Services or his designee as the city's housing officer. The proposed amendments also clarify that for remodeling structures of historic or architectural significance, the applicant must first obtain a certificate of appropriateness from the designating authority before an exemption may be granted. For certain historic structures, the amendments also allow for extension of the exemption period for up to an additional 10 years. Other suggested amendments include changes to the notification requirements to the Board of Education, including a 14-day notice prior to council action for exemptions in CRA area number one, unless the Board of Education has otherwise waived that obligation. The proposed amendments further eliminate the requirement for the housing council to perform an annual inspection, and instead require the housing officer to make those annual inspections as required by state law. Staff believes that these updated program guidelines will serve as valuable economic incentive tool in support of not just the market district project, but also that the program can be applied to help promote reinvestment in other areas that will be included in the new CRA. With that, we can answer any questions. We're recommending the introduction of this change this evening.
Sure. Is there any questions or comments before we move for introduction?
Mr. President, just one question. Housing officer, could you elaborate on that?
Yeah, it's, it's a requirement under, under statute, and essentially, we have to monitor various conditions associated with housing in the community. And so, again, this particular change will bring us into line with what state statute currently says.
You, when, when we read it, excuse me, Title VIII of the city government code, your boards and commissions, were required to have a CRA housing council. You established that in that title. The housing officer is to inspect and make sure that person's doing what they're supposed to be doing, if they've been granted a CRA, and they report that back to the housing council. If you granted a CRA exemption to someone, and they're not meeting the requirements of that, then the housing officer could recommend to the housing council to discontinue that exemption. So, that's, that's really the purpose of, of that.
Thanks, Mr. President.
Are we required to get concurrence from the school board or just notification to them?
Notification is the.
And they have a right to comment on, on it before council vote.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Have anyone would like to move for introduction?
Um, you say?
All right. Introduced here by the mayor. Next item is Resolution 2023-060, determining to proceed with a levy of a property tax in excess of the 10-mill limitation for public safety purposes, and to submit the question of the additional tax to the electors at the March 19, 2024 primary election. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, sir. City council has been engaged in ongoing discussions regarding the growing needs for public safety services, including staffing enhancement with additional officers, medics, and fire inspectors, as well as sustaining and expanding critical service programs like our school resource officers, our K-9 drug enforcement, and fire prevention. In addition, we have some persistent unmet capital needs, notably the need to replace and relocate Fire Station 32 that have lacked resources to move forward with that project replacement. Compounding these concerns are just the many across-the-board increases in general operating costs that we continue to have to endure. At two retreats held this year, at a subsequent work session, council's had quite a bit of deliberative conversation on, on these matters, and determined that an additional dedicated revenue for public safety should be considered, and directed staff to prepare the required legislation to pursue a continuous 4.0-mill tax levy issued for the March 19, 2024 ballot. The 4.0-mill levy would be specifically dedicated for public safety, and this would give voters the opportunity to make a determination as to whether or not they want to make that additional investment in safety services in our community. If the levy is passed by the voters, the city would not seek a renewal of the existing 3.5-mill operating levy, which is set to expire at the end of 2024, and that was a commitment the council had made in their deliberations. On November 9th of this year, council approved Resolution 2023-58, a resolution of necessity for the levy proposal that was forwarded to the county auditor for certification of taxable value, and the amount of the, of revenue that a 4.0-mill levy would generate as required by Ohio's Uniform Tax Levy Law. The county auditor returned a certificate as required that certified the additional tax would generate $2,429,000 per year. If council wishes to proceed and place the question of the additional tax before our voters for their determination, this resolution would authorize placement of that question on the March, March 9th, 2024 primary ballot. So, we present that to council this evening as requested.
All right. Mr. Finance Director, so that was based upon the current assessment values that have been published by the county auditor?
That's correct. Yep.
Madam Law Director, any comments on this before we proceed?
I would just remind council, when you vote on this, you're not actually voting that you're for or against the tax. You're just voting for, against, whether or not the voters should decide the tax is, is necessary. Any question of anything outside 10 mils, council doesn't get to decide that. The voters get to decide that. So, that's really the question before you tonight. Is this something you want to allow the voters to, to vote on or not?
Right. I spent a little time with David Graham this morning, and we say anything outside of the council doesn't get to decide, but the reality is the inside milage, the 10 mils, we don't get to decide either. That was decided by the appropriation.
The budget committee.
Budget committee, but it was based upon the appropriations from the 1930s and the municipalities that existed at that time. And David Graham also informed me that, that to modify that appropriations would have to have approval of the budget committee, the county commissioners, and the largest municipality in the, in the county. And so, he said.
Which is?
Give it a break. Right. So, he said the reality is, those are now fixed for time immemorial, so.
We, we get what?
His assessment.
Six cents on the dollar.
Well, on our, on our, on our inside milage, our inside milage, yeah, we're, we're probably more in the 7% range of the property taxes that we're giving.
Seven cents on the dollar. I think most people don't realize that's, that's really all the city gets in property taxes.
Right, right. Yep. So, okay, great. Do you have a motion? I'm sorry. Yes, Councilman Scrivens.
Chair of the Public Safety Committee, let's go introduce this.
Yes, absolutely. So, this will be a motion for approval on the resolution, so we're taking a vote tonight. So, we have a motion from Councilman Scrivens. Do I have a second?
A second.
Seconded by the Vice President. Any questions or comments here before we vote?
I do have one question. So, this is continuous, meaning that there, it's a never-ending ballot measure, or not ballot measure, it's a never-ending.
It's perpetual.
Milage. It continues to go on, there's not a limit set, right, you know, five-year, 10-year, to pay for our fire engine, to pay for our USROs into the future, and to give, you know, whatever our needs are in 10 years to come back to the table, correct?
There are two ways to get rid of a continuing levy. Council can vote to get rid of it, if you decide it's no longer needed. You can't vote and just put new taxes on. You can vote to get rid of or reduce taxes. The other thing is the voters themselves, through an initiative petition, could repeal that tax. But it does mean it's not something you have to go back and re-present every five years like we have to do now with the 3.5 operating.
Public safety is always a cost.
Danette, is there an option to, I mean, at this point, we're obviously voting on perpetual, or the perpetual one, right?
Because that's what we discussed.
Because that's what we've discussed, right?
Well, it would be continuing, because that's what state law says. This type of ballot measure would be.
Under public safety, that has to be continuous.
State law, the Uniform Tax Levy Law dictates times here. Some, some types are five years, some types are 10 years, some types are continuing.
And so, this.
Uniform Tax Levy Law says this type for public safety services is a continuing levy.
Right, right. Got it. Okay. Any other questions? All right. Let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Nae.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Mayor Mace?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item is Resolution 2023-061. This is authorizing the execution of Amendment Number Six to extend the generation supply agreement with the Interstate Gas Supply LLC through the Miami Valley Communications Council for municipal facility electric supply services. Mr. Finance Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. Since 2011, the city's, they've participated in a regional purchasing group for electric supply for city facilities, and that has been coordinated through the Miami Valley Communications Council. That, that contract is set to expire, and, and the communications council has gone back out and sought bids through December of 2026. Staff believes that it would be prudent for us to, again, participate in that cooperative. While the rate is increasing some in this next contract, rates just generally have increased across the, across the board since the last time that we went out for bid for these types of, of services. And so, that's not a surprise. This is still well below the AES price to compare per kilowatt hour, and, and we believe that this is a good deal for the city and, and the electric that's provided to city facilities. And so, we're requesting tonight that council pass this resolution to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract for those services through December of 2026. I would also just note that the city's natural gas aggregation that is provided to all city residents, assuming that they don't opt out of that program. That just renewed in November, council would approve that several months back. The electric aggregation is actually set to expire in May, and we will be bringing something in January to council to consider for aggregation of electric service moving forward for our residential customers. And so, this particular agenda item is specifically for city-owned facilities and the electric provided to those facilities.
Do I have a motion on this resolution?
Come on.
Moved by the mayor. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilman Branham. Any questions or comments here before we vote?
I just want to say thank you for working on these items, and just want to make sense, not all municipalities have the aggregation services to their customers. And it's, knowing some other municipalities in the area that do not have it, it's been fairly painful to their, to their customers. It's very difficult, too, because you, you individually then have to understand the spectrum of them, the fees, all those structures, and us having an aggregate here is, is just an amazing benefit for.
is just an amazing benefit for our folks, so.
Sure, thank you.
All right, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Brannan?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Next item is Resolution Twenty Twenty-three dash oh-six-two, authorizing the execution of a contract with Tetra Tech, Inc. for an environmental assessment at two forty-nine Sycamore Street. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, sir. In February, the Chair Council awarded a contract to Tetra Tech, Incorporated, for professional services related to the environmental remediation at two forty-nine Sycamore Street pursuant to an RFQ issued by the city in October of two thousand and twenty-two. As part of that contract, Tetra Tech updated the Phase One environmental site assessment for the site and requested technical assistance from the Ohio EPA. This technical assistance requested, request called for the Ohio EPA to review the Phase One and previous Phase Two environmental site assessment work and to suggest additional assessments that would be required to allow the city to request and hopefully receive a no further action letter from the O E P A for that site. O E P A provided a technical assistance comments letter that does require additional assessments. Given that, Tetra Tech has submitted a proposal for two hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars to complete these O E P A required additional assessments at the site, including additional soil loorings, installation of on- and off-property monitoring wells, soil gas monitoring points, and associated soil groundwater and soil gas sampling. This work will be completed prior to the implementation of a remedy at the site for permanent use. As Tetra Tech has completed all the prior environmental assessments at the site, and as the assessment services proposed under the contract are consistent with Tetra Tech's response to the city's RFQ, staff is recommending approval of a contract. Furthermore, as the State of Ohio grant requires remediation work at the site to be completed by the end of two thousand and twenty-four, staff requests that council waive competitive bidding for these additional assessment services pursuant to City Charter Section nine-point-zero-eight B six and award a contract to Tetra Tech at the amount indicated. We feel this would be in our best interest to get this project complete in time.
This is the old DPL power station.
Yeah, what we refer to as the Collier property.
Correct, right. Do you have a motion?
Yeah, these are grant funds.
This is not to clean up any of the junk that's still sitting there.
We, in order for us to get that...
We have to complete.
Yeah, right, yeah, in order for that...
Actually, we'll be bringing a resolution at the next council meeting for the cleanup.
Yeah, so in order for us to be positioned to get that no further action letter, which really gives us some degree of liability waiver and inability for some type of permanent use of the property, we have to go through all those steps to identify any, whether it's groundwater, gaseous, you know, chemicals, subsurface gases, and so there are a lot of additions. We've learned this lesson previously through things like our landfill site where we've had gas migration issues, EPAs, it's a little difficult to work with on these things, but again, these functions are necessary to get that project or that site prepared for that no further action. And as Steve indicated, we would have then additional work that we'd come back for approval in terms of what that remediation would be, the actual remediation, and then ultimately what would be capped at the site, what would we do at the site.
But we've got to complete this in the remediation, so we can do the capping or whatever.
Yeah, in order to get the entire site cleared, cleaned, and ready for reuse. And this is one of those, as we talked about from the very get-go, this was a hard one to swallow, but you have multiple iterations of users of this site that have polluted it. There's no public or, excuse me, no private market solution to this because the property is just not valuable, and the combination of environmental issues with the criminal and social issues that we've had at this location, and it contributes to a lot of problems at Xenia Station and that entire hub complex. So again, we're looking for a long-term solution to clean this up and clean out that entire area.
Mr. President?
Councilman Scrivens?
Thank you, sir. What's the time horizon for all of this? I mean, this is like a ball on a chain that keeps on giving.
Yeah, it's, we've not advanced with as much progress this year as I would have liked, but again, we are required to have project, under the terms of the grant, we're required to have the project complete by next year, so we feel that's achievable. But again, utilizing Tetra Tech, who has that unique knowledge of this, and going through them will save us a couple of months of having to go through a broader procurement process.
Did we get the cart before the horse on this one? Should this test have been done before the building was even remotely demolished?
No, I feel like we've gone through the process, you can't, until you have site control, until you have the ability to initiate the process and initiate the first rounds of assessment, you can't fully know the conditions of the site and what's going to be required. And it's a bit of a moving target with EPA, as we've learned, again, with other projects, the unfortunate goalposts do move with EPA a bit.
Also, Mr. President, is this before or after the bridge repair?
So council has elected not to move forward that bridge project at this time, yeah, so we will...
The bridge, they know where it is.
We'll save that for a decision for the future.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. President.
Well, the acquisition of the property allowed us to tear down the buildings, which got rid of the bad behavior.
Right, and we had to have control of the property in order to be able to do the assessments.
All right, do I have a motion? Moved by the mayor. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilwoman Dean. Any other comments or discussion before we vote? All right, let's call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Brannan?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Next item is a procedural motion, reappointing David Leach to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Sir?
Yes?
I just wanted to let you know, he's not present this evening, he was actually excused from last night's meeting. He has an injury, so he was unable to attend.
Great, thank you so much. Vice President Smith?
Yeah, thank you. Council President, tonight I'm making a motion to reappoint David Leach to Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Leach has served on planning and zoning since December eleventh, two thousand and fourteen, and this would be a four-year appointment with his term expiring on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven. He's got a lot of experience and has actually chaired meetings in times of absence of the chair, so respect to that motion, and I'm going to ask for a second.
I think we have a second by Councilwoman Dean and a motion by the Vice President. Any questions here before we move? All right, let's call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Brannan?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Mr. Finance Director?
I have nothing else to say.
Any questions for the Finance Director? I also talked to David Graham about the, how the local municipal funds are appropriated, and it has another Byzantine equation that went with that, so he gave us the current breakout of that and some discussion on that, too, Ryan, so we may have some more discussion on that, so thank you. Madam Law Director?
We won't see you before Christmas, so just Merry Christmas to you and your families. I hope you have a day and happy holiday. I have your annual Christmas goodies on the twenty-eighth, so everybody better be here. And just a reminder to you, President Urschel, as we discussed earlier, if council wanted to consider moving your meeting on the twenty-eighth to five as a starting time instead of six, I know staff would appreciate it.
Great. Any questions? Any other questions for the Law Director? Let's go ahead and entertain that motion right now.
I like that motion.
Motion to move our next meeting to five A, five P M., not five A M. No, we'd have the day over a lot earlier. There we go. Do I have a second?
So that is a Thursday, then?
That's right.
Thank you.
Do I have a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
Any comments or discussion? All right, let's call the vote.
I made the motion.
Thank you.
I second it, Michelle.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Brannan?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Great. Mr. City Manager?
Of course, I have a couple of things. First, I provided for council members a memo this evening under sponsor request that was made by the Budget and Finance Committee, which discussed the potential of a one-time expenditure of resources to look at some targeted neighborhood roadway rehabilitation. The committee had asked that staff look at how that might be undertaken, and our engineering staff has, under the criteria that I articulated in the memo, provided some locations and price points where that might be undertaken in two thousand and twenty-four. I noted on here that, I'm providing this tonight, we don't necessarily need a response this evening, as to how you'd like to proceed. We originally talked about pursuing this conversation at your January sixth retreat, however, I'd ask that maybe this council consider this at their meeting on the twenty-eighth, and the reason for that is our engineering staff has put together their two thousand and twenty-four work plan, and they are looking to get that, the bid for Second Street out as early as possible.
Correct.
And their sequencing of things, of course, we want to get the best bids we can and get information out earlier rather than later. So in order to incorporate additional streets, they'd really like that information as soon as possible so they can get that bid package out by the end of January.
Correct.
So this gives you an idea of what could be done and at what price points. I will say, I don't necessarily endorse doing all of these at this price point, but I think that is a point the council can deliberate as to what additional you might want to do.
Part of the objective here is to have them clustered in a similar location.
Correct. It's far more efficient for us in terms of a bid package, because otherwise contractors have to mobilize multiple locations, and that's just very inefficient.
Right.
And again, I also pointed out that we tried to look at roadways that would be mill and fill, which means that those are roadways that are generally in better condition, so by saving those roads, you're actually carrying the value of your initial investment much further. The third primary criteria was buried infrastructure. We wanted to look at roadways that didn't have at-risk water and sewer main, and we put asphalt down and have to dig it right back up because we had a water main break in the winter time.
Great, okay. Well, thanks for the team for putting the information together.
Sure.
And let's go ahead and see if we can entertain that at our next meeting.
Okay, perfect. Second, we want to remind the public of closures for the upcoming holiday season, so we will have closures around that weekend, well, it would be not this coming weekend, but the weekend after, from the twenty-second, twenty-fifth, and twenty-sixth for Christmas, and then a similar schedule around the New Year's holiday. So again, we encourage folks, we'll have it posted online and on social media, so be aware if you have business here with our administrative services that we'll have closures coming up for the holidays. And then finally, I'm hoping to, that I have family healthy enough to be able to travel for the holiday season, and as such, will not be here for the meeting on the twenty-eighth. And I just wanted to offer up to our council members who are not returning with us next year, just a sincere gratitude, not only as your employee, but as a taxpayer and voter as well. You do a lot of work, and folks don't realize not only the amount of time, but what it takes in terms of the investment from your family and yourself. No decision that's made here is made easily, even tonight, difficult decisions, and folks, I think, stepping into, you know, to make really hard decisions. So thank you for your leadership and your willingness to serve and sacrifice, and we just wish you the best. It's been a pleasure. That's it.
Any other questions for the City Manager? Yeah, Councilman Scrivens, go ahead.
The listing of streets that you put forward, does that include East Market, Country Club, and South Detroit?
All the projects that you detailed that are slated for two thousand and twenty-four that are grant-funded are already included. We've already have money set aside for those matches. The only other local roadway that we had intended on doing in two thousand and twenty-four is East, is East Second Street, as we've done all the utility rehab and so forth, so that is a local roadway that we are already intending to do, we'll still do that, and that's that bid that we would look at trying to get out originally in January where it was for Second Street. So if there's anything we want to pair with that, we want to do that all in one bid because we get a better response.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Country Club wasn't two thousand and twenty-four?
Yeah, Country Club will redo the utilities on next year, and then twenty-five will be the repaving, because it's going to take the better part of a year to do all the utilities up there.
Okay. Thanks so much, staff. Next item is council comments and reports. I start with Councilwoman Dean.
Sure. I just wanted to say thank you guys for all your hard work. Brent, it's been really great the last couple of years. When I put in note earlier, I definitely to call it into consideration, so it's been a really great couple of years, and I've had the pleasure of serving with you all. Thank you, guys. Oh, Merry Christmas. I guess that's happening, too.
Councilman Brannan?
Yeah, looks like we had Public Service and Utilities Committee meeting on twelve-four. We talked pretty much just all about the code that was brought, the book that was brought forward tonight, so that was a nice, good filler for my evenings to read. BZA we've got next Monday. There's only one item there on the agenda. I'll save my little spiel for the next meeting.
Okay.
I didn't prepare all my notes. I will say tonight's decision was difficult on the police levy. There's multiple things that's coming down the pike that's going to affect every single one of our residents, things that we talked about tonight. It doesn't seem like a lot to us, with that five-dollar curb and gutter cost, you know, that cola increase that people aren't necessarily used to seeing every so often, you know, just any of that stuff. So I will say, it's up to the voters, that's a good thing, but just realize that we might be shooting ourselves in the foot because we're going to come and ask for too much at one time. See what the voters say.
Sure, thank you. Councilman Scrivens?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and reserve to the next meeting.
I still have another speech for my next meeting.
I just want to reserve that right, we're going to grant that right, there you go. Sure, good.
Just want to also say that the Christmas lights downtown Xenia really look nice. Public Service has done a wonderful job, again, getting the flags up for the last holiday that we had flags up for. The lights at the park are on, that's an attraction. Xenia has become a not-so-well-kept secret at this point, and that's good. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Vice President?
All right, thank you, Mr. President. We have not met since November twenty-first, so backing up to December first, just want to thank city staff for the work you did for our hometown at Christmas. A lot of good comments for that. The weather broke. I had to work that night, I didn't get to attend it, but I really appreciate the effort in that. Like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, because we won't see you until after that. Just a couple of things, just like to put my condolences out there to Holly Purdon, the mother of Kevin Jenkins. Kevin was a sixth grader at Warner Middle School. Kevin was active in Weebuck football, played for Xenia League basketball, had the jersey number twenty-two. And unfortunately, Kevin's life ended last week in a tragic fire, and yeah, Holly not only lost her son, but she also lost her grandmother, and so just prayers for that family. They're actually my neighbors. I grew up watching Kevin, and just, my heart just aches for her, and so I know this community has rallied around that incident and with a lot of graciousness and some opportunities for fundraising. So again, I thank you to Xenia because, yeah, today I was in Beaver Creek, and I went to my cardiologist, and I'm fine, and just a wellness check, and the lady who we talked about, I lived in Xenia, and she goes, "Man, Xenia, you guys got a lot going on there. You got all these restaurants and everything getting ready to build," and she goes, "You guys must be doing something really right." So she's, because, you know, she's, "Don't be too stressed out being on city council," because I told her I've been up here for quite a long time. And, you know, when I came on board fourteen years ago, and my resolve's still the same, as an elected official, we have the responsibility of our community's public safety as number one, and that by allowing us to put this levy on the ballot will allow the citizens to decide at what level they want our public safety forces to be at, if they want them to grow and know that your response time is going to be quick, or are you accepting the fact that we'll have minimal staffing? So again, I'd like to thank the council for at least allowing... So again, I I'd like to thank the council for at least allowing citizens to have that opportunity in March to express their vote. And other than that, thank you so much.
Thanks, Wes.
Mr. President, before you.
Yes.
Oh, and Mayor, I just wanted to have say condolences to the family of Dr. Harold Brown. He served as Green County Animal Control Head for a number of years. He was a veterinarian, and Dr. Brown was not only good with animals, he was excellent with people, so we're going to miss him.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I'll try to make this quick. I know people are getting excited. Tuesday, the twenty-eighth, attended an event out at the Sherry Valley Golf Club, Fearless and Sphere. It was an event supporting the Community Steam Academy and talked about women in our military. Colonel Cassie Barlow, who was retired from the Air Force and previous commander at the base, was the guest speaker. She did a phenomenal job, and she presented a book that she has authored. There's two books, one for kids and one for adults, so I have those bought those, and I'm very excited to read those. December fifth, first, as we talked about, Christmas at the station, our hometown Christmas. And I wanted to specifically thank our X rec group. They came out and volunteered. They were there all night in the rain and the drizzle, and it was I was very appreciative to have them there. The Ministerial Association of Xenia, the churches, put together the stockings to hand out. Home Church, Church of Christ, the Evangelical Lutheran Church, all participated and volunteered that night and did a lot for our community, so very thankful for all their participation. Carly, Ryan, and Christina, our staff that that worked that night, put it together. They did a phenomenal job. And then our high school ensemble was there, the high school jazz band. So it's just a really great community event. Thank you, everybody, that put put a lot of effort into that. On Monday, December fourth, attended the Beaver Creek Women's Republican Christmas Dinner and have an opportunity to just represent our community there. December fifth, attended the Xenia Rotary Christmas Auction, had the chance to give the invitation there. I wanted to congratulate our Xenia Rotary for raising over thirteen thousand dollars that all go towards gifts for kids within the school system, the community, teacher-identified kids that need help, and the Rotary steps in and helps provide Christmas gifts for those families. So just an incredible event. Friday, December eighth, attended the Christmas luncheon for Christian women in leadership. Wanted to mention that because Christie Cattery received the Leader of the Year Award and just wanted to congratulate her. She is very deserving of that award. It's about two hundred ladies there, just a really encouraging event. Saturday, December ninth, the AXP, the Association of Ex-Pupils, people that grew up at the home, which is now the AIA and Legacy Campus, they had their annual Christmas luncheon. I love attending that luncheon. It is a family-friendly. They treat us like family. I'm an honorary member, and they collect gifts for Michael's house, and they collected several huge boxes full of gifts for Michael's house, so they did a great job. Monday, December eleventh, attended a new commander's reception at the Pentagon Tower. I won't read through all the different commanders that attended, but I did give that list to Michelle so we can note that in the record. But a lot of new faces at the base, and I got to meet a lot of them. Some of them I've already met and welcomed them to the area. December twelfth, the Green County Township Association Christmas Dinner. They put on a wonderful evening and thanked them for allowing us to attend. Wednesday, the thirteenth, attended the Adult Rec Christmas Senior the Senior Center Luncheon. The Senior Citizen of the Year is Jackie Marcunis. She is very deserving of the award. She was very surprised, and it was great to be able to present a proclamation to her. Also attended the Chamber After Hours event that evening and then went on to our mayors and managers. We had a send-off for the outgoing managers, welcomed some new ones. Thanked Robin Oda. She is the mayor of Troy. She was the outgoing president, and I was honored to be to take the role of incoming president for Montgomery, Green, and Miami County. And then today, attended Women in Business with the Chamber. I had a student with me all day. She's a sophomore at the STEM School, Jocelyn Futrell, and she got to go with me to that. She came here, we toured the city. I surprised staff and asked them all, give a quick thirty-second, what do you do here? We went over to the police station and did the same, and then she was able to attend a swearing-in. We swore in three officers today, so that was a great event as well. I'm excited to have all three of them joining us, so a really great day. So we've got a lot of congratulations and a reception for our outgoing members and some ways to honor them out there, but we'll do that out in the reception. Merry Christmas, everyone.
Thank you.
Oh, I did have, I'm sorry, we I I missed our MVRPC meeting, but I did want to note that even though I missed it, I followed up with two members, Brian Jarvis and Leslie King, to talk about some things that are going on. So I did I did try to make that up since I wasn't able to get there. That's it.
Thank you. Say we'll tend last week, a reception that was held by Athletes in Action for the community, and you were there, too.
I forgot about that.
Yeah.
That's why I wasn't in MVRPC.
Just want to commend AIA on working on connecting with the with the community and looking for ways to go. And I had an opportunity, Brent, to to talk to them about the potential of doing some work in the in the public parks, and they said, probably would have said no up to this year, but this year looks good for us. So they they offered to meet with us in January just to have some discussions about that. So I thought that was that was very positive. Went to the Christmas luncheon with the Xenia Township and just, yeah, it was a great, great group of folks.[1663.41]